Regular meeting of the mayor and the city council, city of Fort Allen, Louisiana. Wednesday, September tenth, two thousand twenty-five, five thirty P M. Council chambers. Each person must decide before entering the chamber which agenda item they wish to comment on. They are not seated in the chamber when the agenda item is heard. They will be notified by an officer to enter the council chambers to address that agenda item. Agenda: Please silence all electronic devices. Call to order. Pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Ms. Joseph.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Hubble.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
Ms. Sardis.
King.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilwoman Joseph. Roll call please.
Ms. Joseph, here.
Gordon.
Yes.
Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Five, approval of the minutes of a special meeting of September third, two thousand twenty-five. Can I get a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Gordon. Second by Councilwoman Payne. Roll call please.
Ms. Joseph, yes. Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Six, public comments. Comments from the public are allowed in accordance with L.A. Revised Statute forty-two-eleven, section two through thirty-four, and specifically limiting to an agenda item to be considered during the meeting. Three minutes per person and fifteen minutes per topic. And no one signed in tonight. Seven, consider approving the active donation of property located at three twenty-one South Jefferson Avenue to specifically be used as a park for special needs children. Ms. Rose.
Okay, first of all, I found out today that our address, I think, was a little flawed. This is the address that the family gave us, so we do have to correct the address. And tonight, we're asking the council to consider the donation, not the active donation, because of course, to get the active donation, we have to have all our signatures, cross our Ts, dot our Is, and we're still missing a few things, as well as some of the family members are not in the state at this time. But it is the intent of the family, and we pulled the most of the documents that we need together to make it. So I would ask permission at this time from the council that we would accept the donation once everything is in order and that the mayor can sign it.
Is that the correct address that you have on your name?
The correct, the location?
I think it's.
Okay, I don't have the legal description is long. Right, the address that the cleaners used. The cleaners used an address, which was three twenty-one Jefferson. It is a location on Jefferson and what was the avenue C? And but when we looked it up, the address said Avenue C, and the tax records run it in Jefferson. So that's why we had to go back and correct that. But it is the property of the old Fort Allen cleaners, owned by the Herman J. Mondaylow family. There is a trust that it was put in, and so we were all going through the legal documents with the trust on this. Ms. Carolyn, that was his wife, is deceased. The first wife was deceased, so it's just a matter of us just putting all the documents to make sure that we're correct when we do accept the property. But yeah, it's okay, the mayor can step in. The proper address is on Avenue C.
And we'll ensure, so if the council is inclined to accept this donation, what matters is that we have the correct legal description, not necessarily the municipal address, and so we'll make sure that the legal description is correct. And then the second thing is, again, if you're inclined to accept the donation, I would suggest that the motion, because we still, as legal counsel, we still need to make sure that the donors have clear title to the property. We want to confirm that before anything is finalized, so we'll need time to do that. We got to have some documents today. We're going to make sure the title is clear for the family who wants to donate it. And so I would suggest that the motion, that you approve the donation subject to our confirmation that title is clear. Because we don't want you accepting the property if, you know, they can't, it's not theirs.
So why don't we just, well. I was just thinking, maybe we just, we take, we get all the information clear and then, so far. That's what I would think we would do, is to, I mean, I don't know. The law, I mean, you know, I just, maybe.
It is, as I said, that's only if you are inclined tonight to vote to accept it. I would recommend that it be subject to our stamp of approval that title is clear.
No, when they motion there, we stepping into the, all the title are clear.
Right.
Okay.
Are they undergrounded? Are they undergrounded?
Are they undergrounded?
They've already, they've already said that, and that will be a part of, I know we talked about with the cleaning stuff, right? And I hope somebody asked me about that the other night. Plus, nothing will be moved. We will put turf on top of the concrete, and nothing will be moved or disturbed on top.
The concrete is not doing a lot.
No, see, we're going to put turf on top of the concrete.
What about, uh, parking?
All we got is what we got. We can't, it's not enough to do a park and a parking. So it will happen to the home street parking. It's not like we're doing a humongous piece. This is all we got. And so, um, mother, part of the family now, in fact, is the artist, one who's over, who's developed, and is also already committed to helping us locate funding for the playground equipment. So it won't be a humongous park, but it'll work for now.
We need to get special needs according to some.
That's what we're looking for, exactly. So it's not like it's a big old playground, but it will.
No.
You know, might be something we grow, leave that and go to something else, but this was property that wants to be. No, we're going to have to pour concrete anyway, we're going to use turf. So we just going to use turf on top of it, which makes it soft for the kids if anybody falls. So just like. So the motion.
I make the motion with the clear title.
Just to clarify, Councilwoman Gordon said she raised a motion to accept the donation of the property subject to the title, legal counsel verifying that donors have clear title.
Excellent.
Case, motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilwoman Joseph. Can I get a roll call please?
Ms. Joseph.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Hubble.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Eight, consider authorizing Chief Mitchell to surplus certain police vehicles that are currently not in use. I think we were given the list.
Yeah.
I like the new color.
You like it? How y'all doing?
I just got off in my sleep.
So last week, I'm pretty sure you guys was on my system that I was asking for assistance with. Some vehicles surplus within our police department, which provides some paperwork along with some information.
Is it on?
We're going to back off again.
Yeah.
Along with some additional information. So I got more information on the vehicle that Ms. Lash just provided with me. Don't mind me if I stretch my leg or keep it in that position. And for the most part, one of the biggest reasons, those vehicles we've been had for a while, we spent a lot of money on those vehicles that, at some point, y'all know how vehicles is, and how they conk out, and before you know it, the value depreciate, but we spending more money than the actual value. So we got to point out, we'd like to go ahead and help somebody else and start the process of getting, bringing that money back within our police department and utilize it for some. You have any questions, ma'am?
So one of them you can back the topic to?
Uh, Lash just got a little play about that. Did you find it?
No. I mean, I don't even know where the vehicle is. It's a twenty-eleven, though. It could be a typo. There were several typos that, uh, vehicles that had been told that were misidentified on the list. So the titles had already been provided when they were told to insurance company. That's the oldest one, that twenty-eleven typo, so I don't even have a title for it, so. But we both can look forward, and it meant that we located the location.
These are eight. With one question. What, what are we replacing with?
We're going to spend the time on.
And nothing just is yet.
Yeah, nothing is yet, but if we're not on time, we're going to have to replace a little more vehicles.
I mean, these are just stagnant right now?
Yeah, and, uh, as of right now, we, I got a call Friday about one of these. Explorer. Second to the last one, the Explorer. It costs six thousand dollars to fix it because of transmission. Well, it's two thousand and seventeen, it's two thousand and twenty-five. The damage to that vehicle cost more than the actual bill they sell. So why are we going to invest six thousand dollars along with fourteen hundred extra dollars for something else that's wrong with it, or we could just get rid of it and start focusing on all the vehicles? That's pretty much what's going on with this whole issue. Okay. Does that make a lot of sense? We investing way too much money into vehicles that don't even, the value of that vehicle as a whole, not this, not even worth it.
Case. Motion.
I'm motioning, excepting.
Case, motion by Councilman Hubble, second by Councilwoman Gordon. Roll call please.
Ms. Joseph, yes. Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Hubble.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Nine, consider authorizing Chief Mitchell to install GPS devices in department vehicles, chief.
Um, once again, I think having GPS is vital for our department. Um, we're in a position right now, we've had a lot of people call us for a lot of things that's going on, and it's just showing the growth of the family, what we're trying to do. And to go back, take back off of what we were talking about with the surplus. With GPS, they also have some stuff made into those, in the GPS system, where you can help monitor the lifespan of the vehicles, to kind of tell you when it's time to get an oil change, if something going out, so it helps along with monitoring their patrol activity, seeing where, locations they control and wherever places they. And I like using examples, so let's just say I had somebody come to me, tell me, hey, look, uh, X Y Z happened on the thirteen hundred block of Avenue B, and no officers, never had showed up. I looked, proved my point, and showed, I showed it, right, hey, look, no, they was there. And it's good that I represent as well to keep up, keep up with the data, when they're controlling and where they're going, and so on and so forth. So that's one of your reasons. Assistant Chief, did you give y'all another side of what we wanted, you said this is last week?
He did.
Can I get a motion?
You made a motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilman Hubble. Roll call please.
Ms. Joseph.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Hubble.
Yes.
King. Yes. Payne.
Thank y'all. I'm getting off this later.
Ten, consider approving a pay application for retainage due to McLeod Electric LLC in an amount of thirty-nine thousand, five thirty-five eighty for the wastewater treatment plant F one pump station electrical modifications. Ms. Erica.
Thank you, mayor. Does everyone have a copy of the payout? Do they have a copy of the payout?
Uh, they have it for some.
Okay. Y'all, this is something that's lingering from last year. Basically, there was a project at the beginning of last year where a contractor replaced the control panel at the F one pump station. That's the big pump station with the pumps kind of down in the hole. And after he replaced the panel and put the panel in service, there was a glitch. There's not a clear thing exactly what caused it, but essentially, the pumps turned off. And if you know that particular thing, when the pumps turn off, if you don't catch it in time, the water gets to the top above the motors and fries everything. And that's what happened. So at the time, when they turned in a pay request, we had just finished doing the bypass pumping for, you know, to keep it, obviously, to keep the wastewater flowing while it was going on. We had got an invoice at the time of fifty-six thousand, I want to say it's fifty-six thousand, three ninety-five. So what I recommended to the council at the time was that we hold out sixty thousand, which we did. And we had a meeting with the contractor subsequent to that. And basically, there really wasn't any definitive, yeah, that makes sense, doesn't make sense. It's kind of complicated. It's not really super clear that there is just some other issues there. But what isn't complicated is the job's been over for fourteen plus months. He, you know, so that means a pump station has been working for fourteen plus months. It only really needs a one-year warranty. So he is, in fact, due his retainage, which is at an amount of thirty-nine, five, thirty-five eighty. And just to be on the safe side, what I did was I had him provide the invoices for the control panel and for the motors themselves. Those are the two, only two things that he really purchased of any value. So, you know, to protect the city, to make sure we're not paying it for something that we don't, he doesn't necessarily own at that time. So my recommendation is to pay him the retainage. Of course, his stance is he's also owed the sixty thousand. The only thing I would say relative to that is he is, you know, technically owed, obviously, the difference between sixty thousand and the fifty-six thousand, you know? So if you want to give him that, and the rest is kind of a, it's more of a, I guess, a legal question than it is a engineering type question of what the liability is of. Yeah.
So we, I only brought the retainage to them because after talking to Mr. Bradford, I think we were going to see about negotiating the other costs because he said it was both parties at fault at that time. So I didn't bring the other.
So obviously, the retainage, I think, and the sooner you're going to pay the retainage, you know, the more bar hand checks you have because we have to hold down for a year.
We do owe the retainage, so we're going to pay that.
Yes, I would recommend that, because, I mean, it is due.
Okay, I make that motion.
What's, what's it?
Motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilwoman Joseph. Roll call please.
Ms. Joseph, yes. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes. Payne.
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll deal with you, I guess, to detail about the other.
Okay, thank you.
Eleven, consider approving a maintenance contract to Link Integration Group, Inc. for equipment located in the council chambers. This is the equipment that was kind of in question, in the conversation when you first took office. That's these computers that we can't vote on right now. I think they were purchased from the previous administration without a management agreement. Kind of went back and forth with that in the beginning of the year. So we called them in, kind of had a meeting with them, and they are willing to still, the contract, of course, with the cost. I think it's like seven fifty for tech support, so they can call, come, or remote in. From my understanding, that's what was told to us in the meeting.
What was the cost?
Seven fifty a month.
And it's for the monitor, for them to come to use. So when they come, they should be able to use it.
Should be. And I asked, but they said, you know, to come and call. They said they'll come, I think, to one meeting, right?
Right.
We should have asked for practice before the meeting.
I think they were willing to do that, yeah, because they told them that they came a couple times, and then they didn't work after they came, y'all came for a meeting.
So since it's a new group.
Right.
Because that's what we did with the parish, they came and held us on for a weekend.
Yeah, because it's the same.
Yeah.
And they can be in the room also to be on call whenever we need to.
Payne, can I get a motion? Payne, motion by Councilman Hubble, second by Councilwoman Gordon. Roll call.
Ms. Joseph.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes. Payne. Motion passed.
Twelve, consider approving a resolution to adopt procurement policy and methods and procedures for the city of Fort Allen government relative to Louisiana Community Development Block Grants. Is that available?
Another requirement of that Louisiana Community Development Block grant is that we have to formally adopt a procurement policy. City has a procurement policy, but does not necessarily meet all of the federal guidelines and regulations regarding federal procurement. So this policy is designed to, for just strictly Louisiana Community Development Block grant, and how we're going to procure the materials, and we shouldn't have that many materials to procure because it's all supposed to be done through the Mr. Erica's firm or engineering to solicit the bids or where everyone is going, that we're just going to follow the federal regulations for procuring the contractors that will be doing the work, the bidding process, through all that, and also following whatever our own state bid laws is. So this policy is to cover both the federal procurement and the state procurement relative to just that Louisiana Community Development Block grant, not everything else that we did.
Can I get a motion? Okay, can I get a motion? Hey, motion by Councilwoman Joseph, second by Councilman Hubble. Roll call please.
Ms. Joseph.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes. Payne. Yes.
Thirteen, update on progress of resolving twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four audit findings. Mr. David.
First state agreed upon procedures is that we give you a written update on how we are going through the findings that we had with previous audits. So I gave everyone yesterday an update. Everything in green is what we accomplished and what we're actively working on to result. Everything in red, still needs to be done, we haven't started. So there's two things we haven't started on, everything else we either started on, fulfilled it, or will have fulfilled by the time the audit is done, hopefully. One thing I do want to mention, in front of the very first finding on the back page, finding twenty-two-four oh to utility building reconciliation, it's been repeated over and over about cutoff policy. I know the mayor has addressed this with her constituents, how she's changed the cutoff policy to the tenth of the month. She hasn't changed it. We just have never enforced what has been on the bills and our ordinances that we need to start after the tenth of the month. So she has tried to do what our ordinances and laws say, and what the art is that we have not been doing for the past however many years. So she has not changed anything. She's just, or she's changed how we've done things, but she has not changed the policy. She's just trying to enforce the policy we currently have. She's just trying to enforce the policy we currently have. So, I just wanna make sure that all our constituents realize, our mayor has not, she's enforcing what the auditor says we need to be enforcing, for that one. Any questions, um, because I'm not going through it, uh, batch of fun, y'all can read in. I think it's self-explanatory, other than that, but I just wanted to point out that cutoff policy. We have gotten a lot of feedback since January that, that's what we've been used to.
Yes.
Hey, fourteen, presentation of the monthly financial report, Mr. Dagan?
If y'all have any questions, feel free to ask, I gave it to you, and I did point out some red arrows. Those red arrows were new GL accounts that we've created, because those things did not currently exist, and we are trying to renumber the GL accounts to, uh, be consistent across the things, so those will be other red arrows. So, if y'all got any specific questions, I'm free to answer, but other than that, I've got nothing else to say on this, I just think I think. Nothing is a, what stood out as alarming to me, uh, due to some revenues that haven't been posted yet, which kind of makes the revenue numbers look a little bit smaller, but I'm not alarmed at this moment in time. Any questions?
Hey, fifteen, condemnation proceedings for property located at eleven thirty-four and a half. Evidence C, uh, and Mr. Justin is here as well, Casey?
Good evening, Council, so, uh, just a quick reminder, this property was on last month's condemnation, uh, hearing agenda. Um, at that time, it was determined that the property is in violation of several city ordinances. Um, after some discussion with the property owner, um, and hearing from Mr. Austin, who's also here today to answer any additional questions that you might have, uh, the council condemned the property, but allowed these property owners some time to see if she would even be able to repair it, to bring it up to, uh, the carbon code standards. Um, she is not here today, she was properly noticed to appear at this, uh, meeting, but she gave me a call around three P M. this afternoon, she said that she could not meet you, she had a doctor's appointment, but she did tell me that they were hard to try to get it demolished. And so, I just wanted to make sure I said that, uh, let you know what she told me. And so, um, at this time, the council has to make a final decision, so the, the, uh, property has already been condemned, that happened last month, but you need to now make a decision, well, she, she's already stated that we plan to demolish it, and so, just entering in the order, uh, to order her to demolish it, which will put the writing after today's meeting, but you also need to determine how long you're gonna give her to get it done.
Did she, did she, oh, say how long she would, well, she probably do.
I'll be honest, uh, she said that as much time as you could give her would be appreciated. I certainly did not, um, she didn't say a specific time.
Okay.
But out of fairness to her, if she was not here, I did tell her that I will convey the message to you all.
Okay.
Did y'all need questions?
The condition of the property has not changed in the last month.
Well, of course not.
It is exactly the same today as it did a long ago.
And I did have a, uh, citizen, uh, I think, near the property, um, come to me to say about, um, like, I don't know if he heard, saw, or whatever, um, about the condemnation proceedings, uh, and he did reach out to me, um, and said he was going to reach out to her or the family, that he would demolish it for her, possibly. Um, I guess if they came up with the amount or something, because he wanted to acquire the land.
I think this is a neighbor who is across the street, right, we actually spoke with him when I, when I was out there last month.
Okay. So, um, I hadn't talked back to him, so I don't know if, so I guess he'll have to reach out.
I would probably recommend giving her thirty days to get it demolished. Uh, yeah, if you, someone could make a motion to allow her the time? Well, it's, it's for them, but allow her thirty days to demolish it.
Let me ask you this, we give her thirty days, okay, she come back in and ask for more time? Or just the thirty days is just it?
Well, she could, and it would be up to you if you want.
Well, I think we should give her forty-five days.
Make the motion?
I'll make the motion for forty-five days. They're, if she can't do it, she got fifteen more extra days to work it out. Because I did, I do hear her say about giving her some of the stuff involved, whatever. So, we give her extra fifteen days to play with it.
Agreed with that?
Yes, the second motion. Yes, motion by Ms. Gordon, second by, Ms. King.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Sixteen alcohol beverage permits, Mr. Joseph? Hey, announcements, uh, thanks. Ms. Joseph, have the announcement first?
Uh, I was contacted by, um, one of the citizens, they wanted to do, uh, square one or something in that effect. Uh, I suggested that we get the chief and the sheriff and the district attorney and some of the pastors involved. I talked to some of Ms. Gordon.
Other than the regular pastors that are on the utility bills. So, we will start city cutoffs tomorrow. Um, also, uh, Fort Allen High Homecoming Parade is September twenty-eighth. Um, let's get out and support our local high school. Um, the parade route, I think, is the same that it's been, uh, for the past couple of years. Uh, if you have any questions, Ms. Lynette has a map, um, but I'm sure it'll be on Fort Allen High's website as well. But the parade is September twenty-eighth for the homecoming.
One o'clock?
Yes, one o'clock.
Are we found doing anything, has the council, for the parade?
I don't think nothing's been done in the past, we can't get together to do something that's, I don't mean, um. We need to collaborate now. Um, yes. Um, the second thing, I want to congratulate, uh, I forgot that at committee meeting, uh, Mr. Marcus Williams in the sewer department, um, he has his, half of his threes. Um, so that was bid for him for the certification, so he's going back to take the other part in November. So, we pray that he gets his other half of his certification, and I think that'll be two people with their degrees, um, at the sewer department. So, that was a big plus for him. Um, also, I have barbecue cook-off Saturday, September thirteenth, and the Old East for Goodies Fest, Sunday, September fourteenth, all at the tourist department, tourist center. Okay, eleven to four, both days? Okay, eleven to four, both days? So, we ask that you go out and support that. Also, um, I have the Nightmare on Court Street, um, that's coming, that's the, um, regular trunk and treat that I've been doing, um, at, uh, William and Lee Park in the past. We're just moving it up here to Court Street, so we're calling it, uh, Nightmare on Court Street. So, anyone that would like to volunteer or participate, feel free to see myself or Ms. Rose, um, and it'll be six to eight, October twenty-sixth. Again, it'll be here at City Hall this year. Also, um, Monday, we had our second town hall meeting. Um, it was, uh, addressed about some issues, uh, outs in the field with different properties. I thought you said something, I'm sorry. So, um, the parish, along with the city, has started working today. The little strip that's in front of the courthouse, they had to dig up to fix a water leak, um, and they were complaining about rolling over the rocks, um, whatever, but, um, they have started today. So, we are in conjunction with the parish with that, um, I think they use their P O, they use their equipment, um, they use their labor, I think two of our guys are supposed to go out to help, so we will have to reimburse them that for some asphalt, is, is what, um, I was going. So, they are starting there, they're gonna move, I think, by the end of the week, by the donut shop, um, right off of L A one, and then they're gonna go to California H Street. That was the great concern spots, that, um, I was told, been hearing about the complaints, um, from, you know, once we dig something up, that we don't go back and fix it. So, um, that's the areas that, um, I was told today that they are in the process of fixing with them this week and next week. I have to ask.
That should be included.
Okay, I wasn't given that address.
They all, they all like discussed it a couple weeks ago, when we first talked to the parish, we was trying to do, well, ordinarily, we went to the, our road project, but the parish offered to assist, so, we just have to supply the asphalt and the soft cut, and assist us in making up the parish. It should be everyone that needs to be happy.
Hey, anyone have anything else?